Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School Town Speedway. Please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2023, School Board meeting. We're working from a 15-item agenda, and the first item is to approve the minutes of the July 11, 2023, meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the July 11 meeting.
Thank you.
And I will second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Minutes are signed.
Thank you. The second item is to conduct a public hearing on the 2024 Capital Projects Plan.
Open for comments?
Is there any comments on the 2024 Capital Projects Plan? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Item number three is to adopt the Capital Projects Plan Resolution.
Mr. President, the recommendation is to adopt the advertised 2024 Capital Projects Plan.
It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the 2024 Capital Projects Plan.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2024 Capital Projects Plan Resolution, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Second page.
Oh, sorry.
All right, item number four is a report on our state assessments from 2023.
In your packet is some, um, two items. One of those items is from grades three through eight, um, and I'll be speaking of that, and the other piece of information is on the, um, 2003 SAT results from the high school. If you remember that we used to give the I-Step test for many years, and in 2019, we transitioned to a test called the I-Learn test. Um, the I-Learn test was a much more rigorous test, and it was in a different format. Um, that was in 2019. 2020 is when the pandemic hit, and we didn't give the test. Um, 2021, there were many corporations that started the school year doing virtual instruction. Um, there were some that finished the year in virtual instruction. Um, but in 2021, all schools had to give the I-Learn test in person, whether they were virtual or not, so it would give you a kind of a history of it. 22 was, last year was the first kind of somewhat normal year of giving the I-Learn test. Um, the I-Learn test is given to grades three through eight, and it's, um, in three through eight, it's given in Language Arts and Math, and then there's a Science, Social Studies in grade four, six, and, and eight, uh, four, six, and seven. So what you have in your packet is how our elementary students and junior high students did in Language Arts and Math. What I can say in general with this is that, um, our elementary schools are making progress since the, the pandemic. Um, there, there are pockets that aren't doing as well as the other, but in general, our elementary schools are, are making progress. The junior high school is, um, one that is, um, not making the, the progress that we'd want at this time, but we're, we're working on ways to improve that. The, I think one of the things that's interesting, if you look at the second page in your packet, if you look in the second page in your packet, you can see at the bottom of those two, two graphs, um, in English Language Arts, we're looking at how did we do with the green line down there, how did we do in comparison with the year before? So in 2022 compared to 2023, you know, green above that and the corporation is we're making progress. And so we made progress in, in 2023 in several areas across through there. Fifth grade is one of those areas we didn't make as, as much progress as we would like. Moving to the junior high, the junior high is, um, was once again the, was once again the top school in Marion County in, in junior high and middle schools. They were highest in math, they were highest in both, which means students that passed, passed both Language Arts and Math. And then in English, um, they were second behind, um, Paramorety Middle School, um, by about one and a half percentage point. If you compare the junior high to a brethren in, in Hendricks County, um, you can see that, um, out of nine junior high schools, we would have been eighth in that, um, which doesn't sound great, but if you look at the difference in, in socioeconomic, um, we are, you know, 20 percentage points, um, more in socioeconomic, um, disadvantaged situation. But the telltale sign too is in EL. We have 14, almost 15% of our students that are EL students, and I think you would find that across the board in our elementaries and our junior high and our high school. So that's the result of the, the three through eight. One of the interesting things when I, when I've described this is there's 388 s- school corporations, um, you can use the word corporation, or you can use, um, organizations, 388 of those that are reported on. In Language Arts, if you combine our scores in, um, Language Arts, um, from three through eight, we would have finished 30th out of 388 in how our kids did in Language Arts. Um, seven of those schools that finished above this were private schools, so they can choose their students, we can't. In math, three through eight, three, again, 388, um, corporations, uh, we would have finished 44th with, again, eight of those being private schools. So, um, we've made some progress, we've still got some work to do, and our, our administrators and our teachers are well aware of that. So at this time, I'll answer any questions, or I'll bring, um, Mr. Claiborne up to talk about the high school results. Any questions with the elementary three through eight?
Well, let me say one thing. I had asked, um, John, to give me the exact numbers for 2019 to be able to compare to 2023. Um, if you're paying attention in the education world at all, you see a lot of discussion about this gap that has been created because of COVID. And so I was particularly interested in how well we're closing the gap, not just how much we did better than last year, but if we go back to pre-pandemic times. And, um, you know, again, kind of the same story where the junior high is a little probably off from where we'd want it to be, but man, the elementaries have come pretty dang close to closing that gap. I was very impressed. Um, and I think that I'm not, um, I'm not sitting here worried about the junior high because if I know, you know, what our administrators and our teachers do better than, I, I mean, I just, year after year, cannot believe it. They'll figure out what's going on, they will start to address it, it will be, I mean, it just, it just happens. And so that'll be the main priority, I know. So I think that, you know, we're cognizant of not just, you know, are we, how, how do we do compared to last year, but how are we getting our students back to recover the loss that happened because of the pandemic? And, and it looks, I mean, I'm feeling good about that.
Thank you. Mr. Claiborne.
Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I just have a quick, uh, kind of three-page summary of our spring results. The first page shows our comparison on, uh, meeting the ma- the math benchmark and the evidence-based reading and writing benchmarks for the SAT. I do have to point out every time that we look at these that these are college-ready benchmarks, um, designed by the College Board for high school seniors, um, to meet, to show that they're ready for, to go to college the next year. We're giving this to juniors at the beginning of, of March. Um, and so for, you know, half of our students almost there in math to meet that benchmark as juniors, and, uh, 60% in the Eng- evidence-based reading and writing, uh, I think that's fantastic. You can see we're 12 points above the state average in, in both, um, and again, number one in Indianapolis, Marion County. Um, the second page highlights, um, some specific demographic areas where we did exceptionally well. You can see, uh, on the math side, um, we're 20-plus points above the state average in our black, Hispanic, white, um, free reduced lunch, and EL categories. Um, so really proud of that. I think especially when you look at our black African-American students, um, at 36% of them passing compared to, to nine statewide, um, the fact that you're four times more likely to be college-ready as a junior if you attend our school than just the average school, I think that's powerful. Um, and you can see the ENL gap is even, the multiplier, rather, um, is even more significant, more than 4%. Uh, the English, um, English-based reading and writing, um, demographics, again, um, I believe there, that we did a great job there. I'm really proud of our English teachers, um, and social studies teachers, all of the humanities for working there. The, um, EL students were 14th in the state there, um, but I, I want to point out the overall difference in, uh, percentage compared to the state is, as Mr. Disney noted, due to our, you know, we were 16% in our juniors that took the test. So that's always going to hurt our number of students who are ready to perform English at a college level, um, when they haven't tested out of the English learning program yet. The last page shows our, um, progression in the I-Step to I-Learn Biology over the years. Uh, we did have a slight drop in the number of, or percentage of students passing that from last year, uh, but it still put us at 22nd in the entire state of Indiana. Nothing that we're going to hang our heads about there at all. So, um, yeah, any questions on that, or, um, if you'd like further details, anything else? Again, this was just a quick summary. I can get you a breakdown on anything else that you'd be interested in.
I think, again, you know, one of the things that stood out to me in this is this, this notion of, you know, are we making sure to get our students back? And, I mean, these numbers are just off the chart in terms of, um, you know, we have not just back, but so far surpassed where we were in that pre-pand- those pre-pandemic numbers. And so that's just really, really impressive. Thanks for all your work that you do with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say especially thankful that some of the teachers are putting in time before and after school. One of my, uh, children really benefited from that effort, and that made a big, big difference in, in him and his comfort level with the test and his performance. So, thank you.
Great. Any other questions for, uh? Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five is the 2023-2024 Enrollment Update.
In your packet is a, um, I tried to make it as small as print as I could, but I think I accomplished that. Sorry about that. But in your packet is a enrollment sheet that you've become very familiar with. There's some, there is an addition at the bottom right of that where it shows what the, um, enrollment was on, um, count day in each one of those years, which is interesting to look at. But this is, shows the total, um, enrollment in our elementary school class sizes dated as of today, as of, you know, noon today, August 8, 2023. As of this writing, we have 53, 56 sections of elementary classes. A section would be, there's three third-grade teachers from one building, that's three sections. What's interesting about that is it's two more sections than we had at this time last year. We have one elementary class with 27 students. We have one, um, two classes with, no, one class with 22 students, and two classes with 21 students. That means 52 of the 56, um, elementary classes, um, 92, 93% of those, um, have 19 students or less, um, in our school. The average class size of secondary, um, our secondary classes is approximately 18, and that will vary depending on the type of class, but in average, that's 18. What's interesting is enrollment on 2022, on this first day of school, was 1780, 1,780 kids. Um, and in 2020, on this date, it was 1,762. As of today, um, we have 1,739 students. So I want to repeat that, we're increasing number of student or teachers, so we can lower class sizes in the elementary level. And we're actually less enrollment than we've had in, you can look down through the history, um, in any time in the last five or six years. So we're providing small class sizes for elementary students, and our, and our junior high and high school has smaller class sizes than anybody else around us. Any questions with the enrollment? I wish there was a better way to predict what's going to happen on day one. But, um, I've got a history of the week before school starts and first day of school and then the, and, um, count day, um, for the past nine years. And, um, this is the lowest we've been in, this is the lowest we've been at every year except for two, 15 and 16, um, we were in the 1,600s. So, you know, the good news is, every classroom has a teacher in it right now. You know, there's small class sizes, and I've seen more smiles on faces than walking around school this year than, than I think I've ever seen. Everybody's happy. So any questions on the enrollment?
Hi, Bill? Great. Item number six is to update the ISBA policies. Uh, we will be tabling one of the policies, the bullying policy will be tabled to be re-reviewed, um, but we'd like to discuss service animals at public events and criminal history checks.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first policy that we're, I'm going to bring to the table here is the service animals. This is new. Um, from the ISBA, Julie Slavens and her team presented this, or we presented this last month, but after cleaning it up, um, it's to, my recommendation is now to approve the service animals and public, uh, events policy.
It's the board's pleasure.
I'll move that we approve the service animals, public and public events.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this policy? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the, uh, ISBA service animals and public events policy, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. The second item that discusses our criminal history checks.
After two months of discussion on the criminal history checks, again, this is brought to you by the ISBA. Through legislation, through, through the ISBA, Julie Slavens took the two policies, um, uh, how we wanted that to look for just criminal history check plus history criminal check for new employees. And we combined those two policies, uh, I feel like what you have, what we presented to you is, 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 is something that will serve us well, and my recommendation is to approve the criminal history checks.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the criminal history check. I move that we.
My recommendation is to amend it, so that, would that save?
So first, I move that we amend it.
Yeah.
And, um, as indicated, but then I think I'm, I'm also, I can't believe I didn't notice this before, I think that we want the title, because we combined those into one, so we didn't have multiple overlapping policies. And this policy actually applies to employees, contracted service providers, and volunteers. And I think we want our title to reflect that.
To reflect that, too.
And so I would move that we would approve, we would amend the criminal history checks for school employees, comma, contracted service providers, comma, and volunteers.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded, uh, that we approve the amended criminal histories check with the updated title.
Yes.
All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Item number seven is to present the 2024 school budget.
Okay. It is our intent to review the document, which includes the revenue projections and appropriations for each fund, like the last few years. We will conclude with a rate summary page near the end of the presentation. This budget has been prepared by estimating revenue low and expenses high. The reality is that we'll spend less than the appropriation, we'll receive more revenue than predicted, and that the financial health of the school corporation will remain excellent if this budget is adopted and improved. Just to let you know, this is to present the budget, and then on August 27th, I'll present it to the town council, and then they will vote on it, on how we are set up. We are the first school corporation that goes through this process, as everybody else waits for a month later, but because of our circumstances with the Town of Speedway, that's why we do it the way we do it. This budget will continue to direct an even higher percentage of funding to the classroom that will continue the academic success for our students and will protect the corporation from increasing prices of supplies, services, utilities, paper, trash removal, et cetera, and will continue to support small class sizes, the instruction to our elementary high ability students, and support additional service such as ENL and special needs population throughout the district. The budget also reflects the continuation of technology support in the district, along with the areas affected by the pandemic. We are seeking your approval by consensus to advance this budget to the Speedway Town Council for your consideration and action. This budget was designed for the last multiple years here at Speedway. It was designed, it has been designed, it's past tense, and if Speedway is who I think it is, this budget will represent what we're all about. We said to the community that the referendum, if passed, we're going to have small class sizes with great teachers. In other words, we're going to put the money that we receive into the classrooms. And I know that this board, and I know this community, we feel very strongly about that. We believe more money inside of the classrooms. With Mr. Disney and his report on the ADM, the budget guy over here at a lower number concerns me a little bit, but I know that we are set up, that we can sustain this for the next year to two years on having small class sizes. We'll have to level set the corporation at some point if the numbers stay this way, but for right now, I'm willing to put what we need to into the classrooms, and this is what it is. If we can go to my screen, please, oh, perfect. You see, I pointed and it happened. That's amazing. The Education Fund is the first fund, the number one state revenue, uh, that we get support from is this, is from state support, which is what we call ADM. That's the membership, that's how many kids we actually have. 72% of the appropriation is from that revenue that we get per child. Other than that, you see the other revenue that we, um, we will receive for the Education Fund, all the way down to $20,452,000 and some dollars. That's the appropriation, or that's the revenue that we'll receive, and the appropriation out, as you can see, has to match that. So as you see, the regular, special, summer instruction, enrichment instruction, your number 17 through 20, and I'll let everybody know, this will be posted on the website by tomorrow or so, so people can, if they want to, and always is, that and the Capital Project Fund. But the 17 through 20, as you can see, it starts with instruction, and it continues through remediation, special program tuition, uh, student support, instructional support with our, um, PERS, School Administration, ECA, and then finally the transfers. My point here is, the Education Fund has to be, by state code, it goes into the classroom through educators. For example, the superintendent doesn't come out of Education Fund, because I don't count for an educator. No laughs. But the Education Fund does go to our teachers, our pairs, and the people that are in the classrooms. So that's really what we get from the ADM, and just let everybody know, October 2nd is a new date, that's the, that, that is the finish line. It used to be September 15th for many, many years before, but October 2nd is when we'll know how many kids we have, and then that will trigger how we adjust and how we do our transfers throughout the rest of the year. That's our big fund. The Operations Fund is kind of what it sounds like. Again, it's the operations to make sure that everything around the classroom works. Uh, the rate is given to us, or we, after we get it, Nancy Johnson receives this on June 30th, um, through the DLGF and through the state, and, uh, then we plug this number in at 3165 to maximize our levy. So we always maximize, you'll see it's a little higher this time, it really just depends what they give us on the number, and we adjust the revenue. As you can see, the property taxes, and then so on and so forth, up to $4,810,000, and then the appropriation, we have to match also. And again, this is for everybody that's a custodian or maintenance people, and it's more of your administration, copiers, leases, equipment, all the way down through liability insurance, the equipment, the grounds, maintenance of buildings. So this is a $4,810,000, $941, uh, $941, doesn't go very far. When you start paying people, and then the capital asset plan is involved in that also, just to let everybody know, it, it, it's, it's tight. Because if one thing goes wrong, for example, uh, the transformer at the junior high, we're doing repairs on that, the price tag on that is $120,000. So that, those are quick things that go fast. So we stretch this money, and it's never enough. But, um, we, we don't want to be greedy on that, but we have to plan strategically how we use that, and that's why we use the capital asset. capital asset plan, and that's sometimes why we don't do everything on the capital asset plan, because, for example, maybe the soccer field lights don't turn on, or the football field lights, or the air conditioner goes down, or there's a hole in the roof, and we have to fix that immediately. So, that's where the money comes from for the operations. Thank you, community, for the referendum. Again, with having this, it allows us to have class sizes between, you know, we would like, I would like them between eighteen and twenty-one. John is down eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. That number will rise, just to let everybody know that. But the rate on this is lower than last year at fifty-two oh five. So, the referendum for the community, it has decreased from the last year. And again, we had to balance both sides of the revenue from the property tax and the appropriation. But this is where, you know, we have thirty-seven PERS now, aides. And if you go back in history of Speedway in the early 2000s, they had six and eight. So, the support that we have for students is off the charts, but if you look at our population, we're going to do what it takes to make sure our students are crossing that finish line on learning. So, that's really the end goal on that one. So, we're very proud that what we're doing on statistically with our state assessments, but it's really because the referendum allows us to keep that small class sizes, and we can continue to hire great teachers. So, that is the referendum. The debt are, we are down to the last year of Newby Project. We built five classrooms, bathroom, and we have two more payments in January of '24. Now, remember, all this is 2024. As I'm saying this, our payments are in January and the end of 2024. So, all the predictions are always six months to eighteen months out. And maybe I should have started with that. Nancy and I worked many, many times to compare things to get to this point. But the, the revenue from the debt to the appropriations, the only major difference is, I wrote it down, we have a, our payment is going to go from two hundred, or four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-twenty to four-hundred-and-thirty-six, which increased our debt just slightly because of the interest. But we'll have that paid off by the end of next year, 2024. So, that's a pretty cool thing. And then textbooks, I might as well just stop right there. So, that's a debt fund, and it's point zero four five four. And all you have to do is look around the state of Indiana, what everybody else's debt is in the state, and I think most everybody would love to have four cents on the debt side. Indiana legislation decided that curricular materials will now fall into our budgets, and the parents will not pay any fees for curricular materials, including Chromebooks. So, just let the community know, we've started Chromebooks for all students, and we do it, we did it a way that I think was the, was the most beneficial to the students. It was a little more expensive because you had to have classroom sets of Chromebooks, but now on top of that, the curricular materials will be included into our education fee. According to my resources, or my intel, we'll get $152 per kid, times whatever the ADM is, and we'll get a lump sum of that, not knowing your ADM and, and the legislation, not knowing we've already bought these books, or we had prices for the last multiple years. It's going to take a few years to level-set that out, to see how that all works out and what we do in the future. So, I do know that they're not on a financial this coming year in legislation, so we're going to have to figure this out for two years. Good news, because of the referendum, because of how financially stable we've been for all these years, we can afford it for a year to see where we're at, but some changes could happen down the road, and I'm talking like two years from now. So, in other words, the corporation through the education fund will be paying for all curricular materials for students. The Chromebooks will be a question down the road. We typically buy three hundred new Chromebooks, which is roughly around $150,000, $120,000. And that will be our price tag also on how we have to do replacements every four years. I wish they lasted seven, but they just don't. They only last four years. So, and those prices will probably be dropping also, I would assume, as the time goes. We get them for roughly about $199. So, those are things that we have to take in consideration for the '25 budget and '26 budget. We're already thinking of how, I'm more on '26 right now, because with legislation not changing many things, or they won't be changing anything on the finances, we have to live with this now. So, we can ride the, ride the wave for two years, and then '26, well, there could be some changes on that. The rainy day fund, it's not raining, but we did add some appropriations. We typically don't have those, but I wanted to be safeguarded because of this reason. For three years, we were very blessed that we had S R. money. Thank you for S R. money, $4 million, but that is gone now. So, I wanted to make sure there was at least appropriations, if needed, that we could tap into. We could always come back for more of an appropriation, but I wanted it sitting there, and we usually never use this, but if we do, it's kind of like an emergency fund if we have to go down the route of, for example, contracted services or maintenance of equipment, building construction improvement. So, if we lose an air conditioner or whatnot, we can immediately move to start fixing the problem on that. And my favorite page that we live in is the tax rate. I think I put people to sleep on this one, but I enjoy looking from where we were actually back in 2016 at eighty-five cents. You go into 2019, we're at eighty-seven, eighty-four cents, ninety-one. I'm talking total taxes. We're at ninety-one, ninety. In the last year, we dropped it to eighty-five, and we were able, I thought we were going to be in the nineties, but we were able to keep it down to eighty-seven, sixty-four, which is our, my predicted where we're going to probably end up. We're going to send what we want for the operations, which is the capital project plan, or the asset plan, and when it goes out to the maximum levy, they'll give us the rate back. So, they'll knock it down once it comes back to us. But we think it's going to be right around eighty-seven cents. I didn't think I can keep it under ninety. Nancy worked, we worked extremely hard to keep it under ninety, and we feel like we have a pretty good budget. It is based off eighteen-fifty. We are under that right now, so our appropriations are high, just for the case of if we start getting a lot of teachers, if we were eighteen-twenty, eighteen-fifty, if we bumped to nineteen-hundred, there was talks of that in June, that we'd be at nineteen-hundred, and see where we're at now, seventeen-forty. So, with the apartments and everything else, working around with, with students, we're in a good place, and we're in a safe place, and I feel very confident in this budget that we will be able to move our student success, which is what it's all about in the classroom. So, that's what this is about. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think every time we talk about the referendum, I feel like an important takeaway is that we're not taking the maximum. We're all, we're only taking what we need each time.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any questions on the budget? The, what we have before us is, as a board, do we want to approve by consensus for Dr. Trebly to share this budget with the town council for consideration?
Yes.
Okay with that? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight is to approve resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2023 budget appropriation across all funds as necessary to fund the 2024 budget.
This is a routine matter. We do it every year in August. This is to fund the 2024 budget by reducing those appropriations, like I said before, from all the, from those funds. So, my recommendation is to approve the resolution, authorize the superintendent to reduce the '23 budget appropriations and transfers out across all funds as necessary to fund the '24 budget.
It's the board's pleasure.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? Sign these.
The recommendation is to approve a one-dollar increase for the paraprofessional and substitute teacher hourly rates. Paraprofessional assistants will make their starting wages at sixteen dollars an hour and substitutes at fifteen dollars an hour.
I'll move that we approve the paraprofessional and substitute teacher hourly rates.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? Thank you. That passes five-zero. Item number ten is to approve the food service employees' 2023-2024 wages and salaries.
The recommendation is to increase a, it's ninety-five cents increase to each pay level, making our minimum starting wage at fifteen dollars. Employees hired prior to 1122 will have a one-dollar increase.
It's the board's pleasure.
I move that we approve the food service employees' 23-24 wages and salaries.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the food service salaries? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? That passes five-zero. That's what it used to be. Item number eleven is to approve extended contracts.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is approve the following extended contracts, as has been done in previous year. Joseph Smith, Charles Bennett, Misty Davenport and, for five days, Sarah Ackerman for one period per day, and Brady Nylan, one period per day.
I move we approve the extended contracts for the five individuals mentioned.
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith is recused. All those in favor of approving the extended contracts, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? Thank you. Item number twelve is acknowledgement of grants received, and we have received a total of $237,659.58 in grants. Item number thirteen is our personnel report.
In your packet is information about the personnel report for this, for this past month. There are one, two, five individuals that have resigned their position. Katie Snyder is the head softball coach at Speedway High School. Olivia Cravens is an elementary teacher. Will Ray is the ninth-grade boys' basketball coach. Jeremy Parker is the assistant track coach at Speedway High School. And Megan Smeltzer is a cafeteria four-hour person at Newby and the high school. The following individuals have been recommended for employment. Kelly Nichols is an elementary teacher. Jesus Rubacabla Pancheco is a Spanish teacher at Speedway High School. Sierra Norris is an elementary teacher. Erica Huntaman has a secretary at Speedway High School. Sadie Flum is a part-time science teacher at Speedway High School. Alicia Goss is a cafeteria four-hour employee at Speedway High School. Elizabeth Anderson is a four-hour Speedway, four-hour cafeteria worker at Speedway Junior High School. Brian Figueroa has a cafeteria worker, five-hour at Speedway High School. Deborah Kilgore-Robinette is a four-hour cafeteria worker at Speedway High School. Matthew Burke is the head baseball coach at Speedway High School. Joseph Davis is the assistant girls' soccer coach at Speedway High School. And Jennifer Collier has a cafeteria worker, four-hour at Speedway High School. There is also one more, one additional disability leave, and that's Elizabeth Hoffman, fifth-grade teacher at Fisher Elementary. My recommendation is to approve the personnel report as presented.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I'll second. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the personnel report? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the personnel report as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed? That passes five-zero. Item number fourteen is recognition of visitors and other business. Welcome.
Please.
Other business. Okay, seeing none. And item number fifteen is to approve claims and adjourn. So, thank you all very much for coming.